Yes, as you can see, and we're recording. So it's officially starting. We did have that anticipated second session. And now we move on to the legislative.
I'm going to the United States of America. Considered public with all its stance nation. Because of liberty and justice for all.
We have an interesting call today because Frank is joining us on school. And Rob is unfortunately unable to be with us for our meeting today. So otherwise, we're all here. Thank you all for being here. And for the good of the order, is there? No? All right. Thank you all. And we now move to the opportunity for the public to be heard. Is there any member of the public? Those students here? Talia, you have the floor. What's your part from?
Yeah, so I have two things that I'd like to talk about. So on that way, different 23rd middle school for students and high school band students performed with other area schools who has connected county music festival. And I'd like to say that they did a really good job and congratulate all the musicians who participated. I'd also like to congratulate the Voorisville Science Olympiad team for their performance at this weekend's regional science Olympiad tournament. Team members medaled in 17 of the 23 science and technology events, including team gold medals in code busters, detector building, forensics, forestry, and remote sensing.
Awesome.
Voorisville finished fourth out of 20 schools, and it was the closest margin between the top finishing teams in the last decade.
Wow.
Very impressive.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Great to hear. All right. So now, sorry, just a moment. Yep. Now we have a discussion of the volunteer firefighter and ambulance service worker tax exemption discussion.
And we're going to leave that one through the specifics of it?
Yes.
And give you some options. Jim?
Hey Jim, before you start, can I just say a couple things? So I just wanted to clarify my comments from the last meeting about the different types of volunteer service that may be performed in our local fire districts. My comments were not intended to demean or diminish any type of service that is happening in our firehouses or ambulance force, really just to point out that there are different types of service. I think our firehouses are an important part of our community. And as a school district, we've had a great partnership with our firehouse, particularly the one in the village. We rely on our volunteers for many aspects of what makes Voorisville a great place to live. The point of my comments wasn't, what, the point of my comment was that it's not clear from the legislation who it was intended to benefit. On its face, my read of the law is that it would allow any member performing any different type of service within our firehouses or ambulance force to benefit from the exemption. And could, that anyone who could benefit could receive up to 10% exemption on the property tax bill. I tried to take a look at the legislative history for this, and there's no sponsor memo. There were no hearings held. So it's tough to get a sense of what the true intent of the legislation was. But from public reporting from, about the sponsors, their intent, I believe, was to reward and show appreciation to volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers, as well as to ensure that volunteer firehouses and ambulance force are able to effectively retain and recruit. So there was, at least from what I could find publicly, there were two different aspects to the intent behind the legislation. From a policy perspective, I understand the intent in terms of retention, recruitment and retention. There are jurisdictions that are having difficulty supporting volunteer fire companies or ambulance companies. It's not clear to me if we're in that same position, just from information available on websites for the village fire district as well as town of New Salem. We have a lot of members, which I think is a great sign and reflective of the volunteers, and that's been a part of our community for years. We may be in that position where we can't support a volunteer fire company. I don't know that we are now. And just in terms of my approach to the legislation and the authority that we have, I find it difficult to analyze what the trade offs are in granting this type of exemption because I don't personally feel that I have enough knowledge to analyze what those trade offs cost. Doesn't mean I don't want to consider the proposals, Jim. I think, you know, depending on the fiscal impact, it's something I may be open to. But I think without, you know, more detailed information on what the true costs are to maintain a career fire service or ambulance force, it's difficult for me to know where we should come out of this. So I'll stop there. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, RJ, for your statements.
So there, we had the attorney draft up a resolution in case you were interested in going ahead. And there are five different decisions that the board would have to make if they were to go forward with this. One of them being the percentage amount, because the law specifically says up to 10%. So you can pick any percentage you want from zero to 10. That's one of them. Minimum length of membership, it can either be two years, three years, four years, or five years. And that's technically, if I read the law correctly, certified by the volunteer fire station or ambulance force. There's a lifetime exemption possibility for members who have been members for over 20 years, so that they would get it for the rest of their lives, whether or not they're an active member. Then there are a couple where if someone is killed in the line of duty, their unmarried spouse would continue to have the exemption. That's an option as well. And then if someone's not killed in the line of duty, their unmarried spouse can also continue it. That's the fifth option. So those are the five decision points if you decide to consider the resolution for the tax exemption. The tax exemption itself, as I said, can be limited from anywhere from zero to 10%. We were trying to figure out a way to, if this were of interest, make sure that we knew what the impact was. Unfortunately, you can't set a maximum amount, a maximum dollar amount impact, you can only set the percent. So if, for example, we were looking at some of the other exemptions, like the veterans' exemption, that caps out at 6,000 for a person who served, or just basic service in the military. If we wanted to equate that, our homes are roughly averaged to about $300,000. So that would equate to 2%. So I did an estimate based on that, saying, okay, let's just start there, see what the number is.
When you say 2%, can you just clarify what you mean by 2%?
2% exemption on the value of the home. So 2% of that 300,000 would be the 6,000.
Gotcha.
So averaging across all. So as RJ mentioned, there is information on the websites for the fire departments to gather how many members there are listed. New Salem has 134 members listed, and that's counting everyone. And there are some families, I'm sure, in there that have multiples, so probably not that many. Voorisville Volunteer Fire Department was listed fifth. Not all of them would qualify depending on the years, but I just did a maximum just so we can see what the impact is.
How many in Voorisville?
50 listed. So if we say 6,000 is the average exemption, 1,104,000 of taxable market value would be exempted. That would have an impact on other taxpayers of one and a half cents per thousand. That's a change of a little less than one tenth of 1%. So just to give you that information, so if you were to go to the max 10%, it would be almost half a percent here. So just to give you that kind of range to work with.
Is this 10% for a household? Like, what if both two people in the house are volunteers?
For a property, you can only have one exemption of this type. So it would be a max of 10% of a set of 10%.
And that's true if you qualify for all three, but it's like the firefighter, veteran, and your senior and volunteer.
So those actually theoretically can stack.
They can stack.
Yeah.
And there's, there's legislation, I saw there's a proposed bill to, there's some provision that exists in the law now where you can't get like a firefighter's income tax exemption and this real property.
Correct.
Exemption. So there's, there's a proposed bill out there to repeal that limitation so that you could get both. But I think you're right. I think you can stack these.
So depending on which you take, for example, if it's $6,000 that gets exempted, that'd be about a hundred, a hundred dollar impact. But they can take a $200 tax credit, so fewer people may take it. It just, it depends where you set that number and how many people would be positively impacted by that.
And there's a 3,000 per property cap, the benefit amount, right? So if you had a property that was valued at, let's say, 1.2 million, right? And we did the, check my math, right? Let's say it's a million and we did 3%.
Right.
Then you mag, you'd hit the max cap.
Correct.
3,000 is the max in the law?
I'm just throwing out numbers.
I, I don't.
3,000 is the max in the law? Yes.
It is.
Yes.
For the tax impact or the?
Per the benefit amount. Or individual. It's capped at 3,000.
Okay. Just.
Property value that can be waived?
The, the tax.
3,000 dollars?
Yeah, the tax effect.
The tax effect, okay. That's a, that's a little different, yeah. Because the tax impact of $3,000 is going to be very significant. That would be a $2 million home that would cap that out.
Right.
So.
Are there any other questions?
I would say that, I don't know anything about the exemption percentage. I'm not prepared to answer that. The idea of there being a minimum length of membership, I'm almost thinking of a vesting concept, you know? And is five the right number? I don't know. But it seems like a significant contribution as a volunteer to the communities to be eligible for this would make sense. Others might say, well, you know, if you're in, you're in. But I, I think I'd rather reward somebody who's obviously been doing it for a while and, and it's been around doing it. I think it's good. The lifetime exemption, I don't, that, I'm not a big fan of lifetime exemptions of anything, so I don't think that's a great idea. And four and five having to do with unmarried, somebody who is unmarried, unmarried, and their spouse was killed in the line of duty, that's a tough one. That's a real tough one. The number five, unmarried spouses as a deceased member but was not killed in line of duty, I don't see that as being our responsibility.
And that, whether or not those decisions have to be made depend on whether or not the board decides to go forward at all. So.
Right.
Do we want to go forward right now? I just get a feeling for where we stand on this. Do we want to discuss this with the questions that would be asked? Do we want to consider it, even though we might not have an idea of where we want to go for the percentage exemption? It sounds like there are some questions we'd like to think about, we need to go forward and we need to think about those. We need to vote on this, if we are to vote on this by March 1st, likely have a special meeting at the end of this month where we could put this in the vote, but we need to discuss it. And then we run it through the attorney mail.
Can I just get another question?
Yes.
So for the, sorry, for the veterans exemptions and the low-income seniors, do those apply to unmarried spouses of the deceased, whoever, the veteran or the, let's say you were 40 and married to a low-income senior, and that person dies, do you continue the exemption?
My understanding is that no. Those are to the specific person, and it does not have that provision that I understand.
Correct.
This is something that if we didn't take action this year, you could revisit another time?
Correct. It has to be put in place by March 1st of whatever year the site has it in.
And this is brand new?
Yep.
And it would be nice to know if other districts are following to what their, their plans are.
I believe Bethlehem is, Frank, you and Jim were.
That is correct. I believe Bethlehem is, is following suit on this. I do not know all the other districts because they're all having conversations this month. But I know, I do know that there are some districts that are looking at this and looking at having it approved by March 1st.
Frank, what about Village of Voorisville and Town of New Scotland there?
If they're looking, I'm sorry.
You broke up a little bit.
What was the question? What was the question?
The, the town and the village here in this district, Town of New Scotland, Village of Voorisville, will maybe also participating in some sort of tax exemption like this?
Jim, do you have the answer?
I see if they'll provide anymore.
Thank you. Wait, can I just actually just answer one more question? I know you talked about the exemption, that is, the 20, 20 years right now is, is the lifetime exemption. Are we approving or disapproving that, or are we determining what the, the year limit is?
No, that's specifically, the 20 years is written in the law. So, yeah.
So I'll just point out for everyone's consideration as we continue to think about this issue, there is a provision in the governor's budget, it's in the anti-locality bill, that would provide for direct payments to firefighters for training activities, to volunteer firefighters for training activities. So to your point, Tim, about this is new, it's new, it's evolving, I think there's, you know, proposals that are coming or may be coming to figure out ways to further encourage recruitment and retention and supporting a volunteer fire companies and ambulance force. So for everyone's.
The senior exemption, is that new this year or has it just come to light to us this year?
No, it, it has been in place for a long time. It was the limits that were changed.
Didn't it double?
It went from 29 to 50.
In place meaning it's an option, but wasn't in place in our district or?
It, no, it has been in place.
Oh, we are, you and Matt went to. Sorry.
For, for the veterans and for the low-income seniors, they exist, it was just a matter of possibly changing the limits.
Okay.
But we don't have numbers from the volunteer fire departments yet as to how many people they have on their roster.
Well, we pulled up the list of people. We know the maximum possible, but there are obviously people that are probably married and in the same family, so.
And we don't know if there's a, how many years they've served?
They, they list those as well.
Okay.
Four, if it's two years, four people did not qualify for Voorisville, I didn't go through and specifically count for New Salem. I'm, I'm going to guess roughly 10 if it's roughly the same. Roughly the same.
Robin, would you like to express anything at this point?
No, I just think like maybe look into it a little bit further, see what other districts are doing. There's more information that we can get.
We would need to have a conversation about it if we're going to do it beforehand. Don't know that we'd be able to necessarily at a special meeting. So it's just, as much as we can just, such, figure out now, not going to go there, would be helpful, but.
If we were to start low, we could raise it at a future date. So this could be a phase in, for example, we could start at 2% and.
See what the impact is.
See what the impact is, what the response is, and go from there.
That is certainly a possibility.
Yeah.
And Jim, the 2% is equal to with the veterans, the lowest on the veterans, correct?
On average, yes. So there's a fairness factor there as well.
Correct.
What we were looking at when we were seeing whether we can cap it out at a specific number, yes.
So unfortunately, Rob's not here to weigh in. Is there any comfort level around looking at this as a 2% thing, seeing if there's any more information we could have if we set this at 2% for this year? Is that where folks would feel comfortable if we are to, you know, see if there's more information Jim could get? We could do that maybe well with schedule or special meeting with enough time to have a discussion about the resolution.
I, I would feel comfortable with the 2%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And I, but I would put like a five-year thing in there.
I'm just going through, there's five questions.
All right, yeah.
I actually have notes on yours because you were very helpful.
Yeah.
And RJ, were you feeling?
I'm not opposed, but like I said earlier, I, I'm having a tough time evaluating the trade offs because we just don't have enough information about what it would actually cost to, if we, because the way the legislation is pitched is if you can't support a volunteer service, then you need to pay for it, right? Because we're not going to not have firefighters respond when we have a fire. So what does that actually cost? I have no idea. And I don't think there's good information available for us to look at. So it's, I'm not saying I'm uncomfortable at 2%, I think the financial impact is, is pretty minimal. And, you know, it's spread across the rest of our tax base, but I, in terms of our, you know, fiscal responsibility, it troubles me that I don't have better information.
I, I'm right there with you. Given that, I'd like you to address the idea of the minimum length of membership, that you'd be comfortable starting this at.
I think five years is not unreasonable. If you look at it like vesting, you know, in a state now they have tier six, which is five years.
They changed it to five?
Yeah. I believe it's five, right? And then I'm tier five, which was a 10-year vesting period, so, you know, certainly lengthier periods of service. So I, I think five years is totally reasonable.
Robin, any thoughts on that?
Agree. I think five years is reasonable.
I agree. Okay. And the lifetime exemption, do we have any comfort levels on that one? Are we, let's start with me?
Yeah, I, I think 20 years of lifetime service is, is worthy of an exemption. I, I.
For that.
I, I do like that.
Okay. Are you? Tricia?
I hardly did think what's more new or not.
Right. This is so, it seems very arbitrary.
I mean, all this in general, it's hard, I feel like we're being forced to pick winners and losers.
Yeah.
Based on what the legislation votes for. Yeah, this was, of course, everyone that we're talking about are winners and serve our community. 20 years is a big commitment. I could be going either way. See if my votes that decide and vote.
Okay. Yeah, this is, yeah. I don't think we must qualify this to vote, but it's definitely got, like, a feeling. Yeah. Sorry, I was just looking. I think, yeah. Robin, did you have a thought on that?
I agree also with 20 years.
I don't like it. I have no idea what that number's going to be. You might have somebody that's living in that $3 million house because all of a sudden got a 20-year exemption. And I just, I think, I think they're spreading it out over a long period. You're asking a lot of people to trust that we know what we're doing on that one, and we don't.
Okay.
So here's my take on it. Because there's really no constraints in the law around who's a member and what membership means, this piece is meaningless because someone who's a member and has been for 20 years will in all likelihood continue to be a member until they die. So I think this is one of those, if we do it, we're, it, it's going to happen anyway. So I don't know that we need to decide this one.
Okay.
I, I'm saying I, I don't think we need to include it.
So, all right, not that we're voting, but, all right, who wants to start with the unmarried spouses or killed in line of duty or the not unmarried, of the unmarried versus not with a deceased, not in line of duty? Any thoughts on that? Who's going to start now?
If we're going this way, I would say yes.
To both?
Killed in the line of duty.
But not the, just.
Unremarried spouse? I'm more wishy-washy on that one.
Okay. I think that would be a tough one and.
So I would say four I could go with. I do think if somebody was killed in the line of duty and they already were receiving the exemption, I think continuing that on to the unmarried spouse is fine. The number five, I don't think that's necessary. I would say no to that one.
I would have said exactly the same thing. I agree. If, if you were killed in line of duty, the spouse certainly should get the exemption. Number five, I'm, doesn't, doesn't feel as, as.
Yes, four, no, five. Okay. Saying yes to four, no to five. Okay. All right, Jim?
Okay. I have my notes.
Really like more information on. Thank you very much for trying so far and thank all of you for reviewing this because it's a challenging position and we are grateful for the service of volunteers. Now I think we turn to Frank for the attendance report. Is that good for you?
Yeah, that works for me. And please let me know if I break up at all. Yeah, and I will also reach out to other districts and get a pulse of what's happening with that as well, if the board would like one. Okay. So I want to talk about a few things. First, I want to talk about the capital project. We are moving forward with the vestibule. We had a kickoff meeting. That vestibule is actually going to be scheduled for the work to be done in July for the middle school. There's a lead time on the window, which is about three weeks, so three months, sorry. So most likely, we're not going to be able to get that work done until July. It should take roughly one month. So the good news is by the end of July or early August, our secure vestibule in the middle school will be up and running. We are still out when it comes to the high school vestibule. So we're still waiting on some back and forth with state ed and some other issues. You never know. We could get early approval and out to bid and maybe get it all done in the summer. That's a couple of thinking. I see Jim kind of giggling a little, so probably not, but it's always worth a hope. Our big capital project that we're currently working on, the larger capital project for the elementary school and transportation facility, we do believe we have a construction manager as, and we're working through contract negotiation. As, and we're working through contract negotiations with them now. And then I will have a contract, hopefully by next week or the week after, for the board to approve or review when it comes to that for the construction management firm that will oversee your partner in the project. Any questions on capital projects? No questions? Okay. So the next thing is grant applications. The district is actually looking for, towards a grant for social-emotional learning from the Office of Mental Health. The due date is actually the ninth, so we're hoping that we can apply for this grant and get it. It'd be for the second step, social-emotional program. Second Step offers a K-8 program for all students for social-emotional learning, also an anti-bullying prevention unit that goes along with that, and also a staff social-emotional support system as well. And that would also be required if we got the grant. We will know hopefully by mid-March or late March if we were awarded it. But it's not often that, you know, there's grants out there that we can go for and would fit where our plans are, and this one does. So we are hopeful that this will work out in our benefit. There's our other grants that are out there as well. There is potential grants for NYSERTA that we're looking into that I will, myself and Jim will be meeting with NYSERTA to go over some options to see what we can be doing for the future. Also, there is a federal grant that we're expected to come out regarding school resource officers and funding for school safety. I'm really not sure exactly what that is going to pertain to, but these are grants that we're all currently looking towards and looking forward to. Any questions on those things? Okay. And I can't hear if there was one, I apologize.
Good list of priorities, though.
Alright, and the last one is over February break, there's something called CPAS. It's Community Policing and Safeguard, Committee on Policing and Safeguarding Schools. That's happening in Saratoga, that's for law enforcement, for professors all over the world that talk about these social-emotional anti-bullying programs, police officers, school districts. So myself and some team members from the administration team will be going to the conference and will be reporting back to the board on some of the things that we're going to receive over it. We're very excited. There's a lot of topics that we can cover, and one of them is actually called the I Love You Reunification Program. Right now, we're working on reunification as part of the district plan, and we're actually want to plan one out. This I love you guys program is pretty good. I've used it in the past, so I'm excited to learn more about it and maybe bring it to the district. And with that, I wanted to be short and sweet because we do have the budget presentation that we have to give.
Thank you.
Alright, so if all is good, I will move on to the budget presentation, and Jim and I will try to do this one together over, you know, over this. I again thank the board for allowing me to be a giant head in the screen today. I was just under the weather and I appreciate the opportunity to be here and still present.
Thank you, Frank. Bye.
Okay. And here we go, for our first round draft, Jim is going to go to start the big stuff.
So the budget dates, as usual, we've laid them out. The budget calendar will actually be considered later. But a few of the dates, April 3rd is the expected adoption date of the budget and the corporate tax report card that we have to do every year. Deadline for Board of Education conditions is two weeks later on the 17th. Absentee ballots are made available the next day. May 1st is the technical deadline for the board to approve the budget and communicate that to State Ed. May 8th, we hold the district budget hearing. The next day, the newsletter will go out, which includes the one-unquote "six-day notice" that's required. And May 16th is the actual voting. There we go. Benefits of the changes we've made in this budget. So we do maintain, not really change, but maintain funds needed for maintenance projects at all buildings, including camera systems upgrades. We always try to, when we spend this money, to generate more money, if we can. Going through BOSIs allows us to generate more money in future years. There's the $100,000 capital outlay project that's tentatively focused to the elementary school for smaller projects in between that will be necessary before we get to the big project. Also, a continuation of the funds for the new reading program because we're likely going to have to pay for that over two or three years, depending on the size of it, and the professional development for it. Staffing increases to address noted areas of concern and growth of the district population. We always have to adjust to what the new rate is, whether that's more students or whether that's changes in population or changes in needs. We increased equipment lines fairly significantly for the one-to-one replacement program and special education and athletics so that we can continue moving forward in those areas.
So I do want to talk really quick about what the staffing increases are. So you're aware of that and that to be, because we're looking at still continuing the programs that we had through when ESSER funding stopped. So those programs that we have currently had, the social worker and the AIS program are still something we're going to continue. We're looking at adding a special education teacher at the elementary school, a dean of students slash guidance counselor at the elementary school, and an assistant principal at grade six through 12. After looking, and we talked at the ad hoc safety committee about these things, and these are programs that can help benefit the district, the students, and the social-emotional programs that we have. The addition of the counselor at the elementary school would then give us, we would actually be under the recommended numbers, which would be one to every 250 students, one counselor to every 250. We would be under that for the elementary school with one and a half guidance counselors and a social worker and the school psychologist. And then also in the high school, we'd have the three guidance counselors and the social worker and an assistant principal, that doesn't count for the one to 250, but they would also help support all the programs. Any questions on the staffing increases?
No, we're all shaking our heads, we're all good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next slide just goes through part of that. Again, we're making sure that the federal COVID aid, when it ends, is going to be picked up on the general fund then. There's a little wrinkle in the foundation aid increase where they want to have high-impact tutoring aid. They've carved out high-impact tutoring aid from the increase of the foundation aid. That's $136,000. So it may require some re-titling of people to make sure that we can access those funds, but we are working through that process to try to figure out what the impact is. It would not be a diminishment in any way, whether it's coming over from federal or whether it's any of it, so. Vehicle proposition, so as we replace the fleet, and yes, I know we're getting close to the point where we have to go electric, but I really don't want to. I don't think anyone wants to at this point, but we'll work through that as we get the bus garage in place with all the conduits necessary and everything and work through that. But right now, we are proposing two large 65-classender school buses, gas-powered, not diesel. One smaller van-based bus, also gas-powered, for a total... And by the way, these amounts for these buses have increased significantly from the prior year. Last year's was essentially this, the two large buses and the truck, and it was only 395. So I mean, it was, it's going up significantly. But all of these vehicles would be bus-able at about 64% within five years. So that's that.
Jim, if we were to try and go electric, is it even feasible?
Well, Argy, let me take that one at the moment. There is a lot of discussion right now about the difficulties of going electric and some of the ums that school districts are facing. Right now, we're concerned with NYSERTA not having the ability to be able to support it, fill the program. Not all the buses have the capacity. There's some issues with mileage that are going on. I will tell you from a neighboring district that I've spoken to, there are some difficulties that go along with that as well. With a recent legislative breakfast I went to, there's been a lot of conversation regarding switching over to electric, and that might end up being some changes over time. So we were probably looking at slowing that down to make sure that we have the timeframe, and then in the next three to four years, I think you'll see different changes to the legislation come out. Does that help answer the question, just because?
That is correct. I care about the environment, I just want to make sure our kids are schooling.
And right now, an electric bus, Jim, how much does an electric bus range? How much does it cost?
Anywhere from high 300s to mid 400s.
So it's more than twice the cost of a bus?
Oh, we're talking two and a half times right now. And hopefully, as they ramp up and get better, it'll come down just the way I need it to go. But at this point, unless you have the grant funding through the federal grant program, which pays for everything, it doesn't make sense.
We're in a good place because we're going to put the foundations down, and then as we grow, we'll be able to grow with the program itself.
So the next slide is about the tax cap. We have just received a piece of information today that changes the OTM BOSI number by about $300. So it's not as expensive. You start with the tax levy from the current year. You apply the growth factor of, in this case, over 2%. That's our growth and profit. You subtract the capital levy exclusion from the prior year, you always have to offset these things. Multiply it by the 2% CPI factor, which is the maximum they will allow, and it comes to 24.75. So that's an increase that would be allowed under the base calculation of 3.58%.
Capital levy exclusion. As I calculated, here's 126.9, it's actually 127.2, somewhere around there. So we'll change it by like 0.01% when we go over everything. But the ultimate tax cap number is 4.32% for this upcoming year, which is what's going to be reported to the control office. Our draft budget includes only a 2.5% increase in the tax levy. As we've kind of discussed as we've gone along, when you have growth in the 2% rating and the tax levy goes up to a half, rate is only up by a half. So with the growth, we offset the growth of the tax levy. So that's what we're trying to shoot for, try to keep that impact as low as possible.
I think we're also being cognizant of the recent vote for the capital project, which causes an impact.
And last year's tax cap was 4.16. We only took 2.5. The capital, of course, comes in at 2.5. The next year's budget's projected at 2.5, but if we add up the two tax levies limits, it's a little over 8%, like eight and a half percent. And over those three votes, if there are, if this last one is approved, 7.5%. We're being cognizant of staying within the tax cap, even though we technically do not with a separate capital vote. So we're trying to be very careful to make sure that we are cognizant of the ability of taxpayers to pay. So the executive budget proposal, I just wanted to show off a little bit, the first two lines.
You should be showing.
So the executive proposal is 8.6 million. Estimated tax levy with the two and a half percent increase was 20.242 million. Our estimated other revenue, I have not changed that. It does change because of the interest rates we're getting. So there may be a little adjustment there once we see things settle down. Estimated allocated fund balance is just slightly under that two and a half percent that we discussed last year to get us to total revenues of just slightly over $30 million. We go to the next slide. The proposed budget is, shockingly, just a little over $30 million to match up with the revenues. With a below-tax cap increase and mostly foundation aid due amount because that's fully funded in the governor's budget this year. That was a significant increase of approximately 1.2 million. So the projected gap is zero at this point, which is a very unusual place to be at this time.
It's a good place to be.
It's a very good place to be, but it's very unusual.
It's all good news. Jim, at some point, can you share with us the breakdown of the allocated fund balance? So I know we have reserves for certain things already.
Sure.
Set aside, and then what's going up and down. I think we went over that last year.
That would be the reserve projection, which I'll probably do at the April meeting, since we're a little closer to the end of the year, and that would include...
Technology is grand.
Are there any questions about this budget situation?
Just if you want some night reading, you know, you have to have your really tiny glasses. Yes, this is a one summary of the whole thing, so.
I'd like that. Now it's private. Alright. I guess that concludes our budget presentation for February this year. We're going to move to section four, the approval of minutes. Anyone have anything to say about the minutes? Anyone want to approve them?
I can.
Any seconds?
I'll second.
And I'll hear. Alright. Treasure reports. All of 5.1, 5.11 and 5.12. Any thoughts, questions? Any movement?
I'll move them.
And second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Personnel items, before we go to that and vote on it, I just want to call out four retirees who have been part of the community for a very long time and done a lot to help make this community a better place for our children, for the students of the community. Thank you to Mike Young, Mike Corret, Becca Zients, and Lang Guer for your service, and we hope you know that you are appreciated and comrade. And with that, and other statements for the personnel items? Alright, 5.2 in its entirety. Anyone like to move 5.2 from 1 to 18?
I will.
And seconding, I'm not sure who moved that one. You moved it, I'll second, second it. On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Wishing you all best unremarried. Alright, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, and 5.8. A bunch of different things there. Any questions or thoughts? Anyone like to move those apart?
I will move them.
If you would like to second those.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any thoughts? Congratulations, Jim. Thank you, well deserved.
Thank you.
Alright, and then, Argy, would you like to review the audit committee?
Sure. So audit committee met earlier this evening. We reviewed our claims auditor reports, thanks to Robin Berch, who's our newest claims auditor, and really digging in and doing a great job.
and really digging in and doing a great job. There were a couple of, more than a couple of exceptions identified. All of them, we believe, are oversights and things that are easily corrected. Some were attributable to newer staff, some of which have now left the district. So hopefully, we have fewer exceptions noted going forward. We reviewed our function level, current function level status for the general fund, which is our report of what we projected as far as our expenses and then what we've already spent and what we've encumbered and for the balance of the fiscal year. And that is looking terrific. And then we talked about our school lunch profit and loss reports for three months, October through December. And we had some swings in there from, you know, very in the red to being profitable and then barely breaking even. So we're starting to see a pickup in our car purchases and some other things that are kind of propping up the school lunch one. So that's good news. And we will meet next on email.
And curriculum, Tim, I think, yes, we need to.
We have a meeting tomorrow, February 7. It'll be in Frank's office. We have an agenda that includes a discussion about safe search program on Chromebooks. Kristin DeGue is going to join us and talk about that. Jeff Vavenzio is going to join us and talk about the reading program, newest reading program, and give us an update. We have a couple new course proposals and we have some staffing recommendations. Those are all on the agenda for tomorrow.
Sounds beautiful. All right. And for facilities, I think Robin's going to pull down that board?
We met incredibly briefly last. And the only news report is that we are fortunate enough. We have hired a new director of facilities. I believe their start date is February 13. Gentleman's name is Neil Carey. And the only other thing is Frank had mentioned that he and Jim were looking into the responses to the construction manager policies, the two different companies.
Great. And then policy, RJ, you're going to cover that one?
Yeah, sure. So Frank, Tim and I and Talia met last week and were in first. Tricia wasn't able to join us. We had a lengthy meeting. We started out following up on safety and we reviewed the proposal, a draft proposal for the Be Smart Resolution that's going to be before the board for a vote this evening. And there was a lot of discussion. We talked about it for close to a half hour. And we ended up with three parts. And this was basically a continuation of our last board meeting where we had said, what do we want to be in it? What are we telling the administration to do? So the first part is that we're directing the superintendent to update the student handbook to include information about parents' legal obligations regarding secure storage of firearms. And then we wanted to, and we spent a lot of time talking around about the mechanics of how we would affect this update and make sure that people understood what was in there. So what we settled on was that in those, that packet of papers that comes home in summer and should be returned at the beginning of the year, that it would be acknowledged, the update to the student handbook would be one of those acknowledgements that parents sign off on when they return those forms to the school. We also, in this resolution, will direct the superintendent to annually distribute information to parents and guardians explaining the importance of secure gun storage. And this, we didn't want to constrain the manner in which information would be distributed and leave it to the superintendent to determine what's the best way and whether it's multi-channel. That's up to Frank. But we wanted that piece in there and it to be an annual requirement. And the third piece is that we continue to work with local law enforcement agencies, health agencies and nonprofits to collaborate and basically increase efforts to make sure people are informed of the legal requirements and the reasons why you should securely store firearms in your homes. So that was a big part of our meeting. We spent a fair amount of time too talking about sports and extracurricular policies. Frank had prepared a draft for us that combined a number of policies into one. And it, there were pieces of it that we felt needed a little more cleanup and massaging. So we don't have anything ready for the board at this point, but it's a work in progress to really synthesize and combine a bunch of policies that we have out there on sports and extracurricular participation, including code of conduct for those activities. We talked about briefly about admission of non-resident students. The issue was raised to Frank and he vetted the issue with our council and the recommendation was to keep our policy as is. So that is where I think we are absent any board push, you know, to revisit that. Oh, one other thing on the sports and extracurricular policies. There are provisions in our policy that talk about, it's basically a penalty structure for violations of the policy. And we were questioning, where do we fit, you know, on the spectrum of other districts in terms of the penalties that exist in our policy? And per Frank's research, we're kind of middle, and I should say Joe Sambienza's research, we're kind of middle of the road in our policy includes a provision that doesn't exist in some other district policies to allow someone by, you know, taking affirmative action to seek help for whatever the issue was that led to the violation to minimize their, I say sentence, but their sanction.
Consequence.
The consequence under the policy. So that, I think we have that. That draft is going to continue to be a work in progress. So if anyone has feedback on the penalty structure, I think we'd love to hear it because I think it is a touchy subject. And the concern is really, you know, we're putting, we're penalizing people who are taking the initiative to participate in extracurricular activities or sports where somebody who does the same thing who doesn't participate has no sanction, or, you know, sanction above and beyond what the normal sanction would be. So for everyone's consideration, and it's a work in progress. We talked quick about a green purchasing policy. Frank is looking for direction from us on how green is green. And this is one that's really difficult to put down because, you know, we, of course, want to be, I think, as green as possible, but we're mindful of the fiscal impacts that that might entail. So that's also a work in progress. There are a few policies that we reviewed that will be on the agenda later. Do you want me to go through them now or see that? Sure, go through it now. Okay. So these were from NISBA's first quarter policy updates. There was a change to the increases in required instruction time for homebound students. So we had to make those updates because they changed in the law. The draft policy from NISBA also adds a section on homebound instruction for student serving suspensions. So we incorporated that into our policy and it sets forth certain minimum instruction times. There's a change to the expense reimbursement policy because the IRS reimbursement rate changed, rates changed a lot up. So we, the language in the new policy, which is for everyone's vote, just substitutes the particular rate for IRS-approved rate, the language to that effect. So we don't have to keep coming back to that. And then there's a change to, I can't remember if we call it fiscal whistleblower, but basically a whistleblower policy on reporting misconduct. There was a change in the civil service law that took out a requirement that previously existed to report internally misconduct or, you know, wrongful conduct, someone's perception of wrongful conduct. And the change was to not require the internal report and specify, you know, where to report outside. And there was language in the draft policy that I think we need to just take another look at. Sorry, Jess. It says someone's encouraged, but only if they feel comfortable to report to the superintendent or the Board of Education. And we spent a lot of time talking about if they feel comfortable and whether it was necessary language or really just superfluous because we are just encouraging, we're not requiring. So we had decided in policy committee to take those words out. I think they're still in the draft that's on the website, but we can decide how we want to address that.
It's in the second paragraph. Jess? They are encouraged.
If they feel comfortable. If they feel comfortable. And as part of that sentence, we could decide who to report to or who the recommended people to report to are. And we settled on superintendent and Board of Education. But of course, someone who has a complaint can report to anyone. Okay.
If they feel comfortable.
If they feel comfortable, yes. And then everything else is, I mean, there's a ton in our future list. Thank you, Trish. Trish is keeping us, like, on task and has requested a bunch of NISBA draft policies too for our review so we can really measure them against what we currently have and what NISBA has because some of ours are out of date. So we've got a lot of work planned for the rest of the year. I think that's it.
You were there in spirit, Trish, because that was a great agenda.
Yes. Thank you for covering for me. No problem.
As far as the ADAC Safety and Protective Factors Committee, Frank, you did kind of cover it in your recommendations regarding staffing because that meeting was really being helped to understand what's going on. So we are informed as a board and also how that fits in with the budget. And in terms of the assessment of need in that area and in general for the district, that's what you came up with. So you've already kind of given the ADAC meeting. We have no current firm plan to meet again, but should we need to, we absolutely will as more information comes to light.
Rachel, I actually missed something and I apologize if I could speak really quick because it goes along with the ADAC Safety Committee. And we partnered with Albany County Sheriff's last week to do a safety vulnerability audit. So if you remember, we actually did this in March of 2019, literally right before everything shut down. And I did get the report back. And this year, in comparison to what we did two years ago or three years ago, you know, the word reviews were this is a marked improvement of the district. So there was a change in our culture, a change in our protocols. And, you know, the Albany County Sheriff's who went and reviewed it for us are giving me a report that I have to be able to use and then also one that I can share. Because again, some of the things may actually impact safety if they were out in the public. But they said that there was marked improvement. Two things I just wanted to talk about quickly just to show this is they do these red tag things where they post letters or they create, they put a prepper bag up. So they posted letters in our bus, on our buses, saying, if you were to find this, take it to the, you know, to the people. And every letter was found by our transportation facility. And they came in in the middle of the night on a Sunday and they put a bag, a backpack, just left it randomly in the hallway. And actually, and they put some prepper stuff in it, like nothing bad, just like, you know, like weird things that you wouldn't expect to see in a backpack. And one of our students actually found it and brought it to the attention of administration. And they said that was huge, that our kids are now starting to get that situational awareness. And that's the important aspect of it. So I just wanted to share that really quickly. I totally forgot about it and I thought it was an important spot.
It's good to hear. With that, we're going to move to, does anyone have anything to add? We'll move to the new business, 7.1, the class sharing tax security. Do we have any questions or statements you thought? Or just move it. Someone would like to. I'll just move it. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thanks to the Boysville Rod and Gun Club for donation towards the prom. Should we choose to accept that? And does anyone want to move it? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that, thank you all. Thank you to the Rod and Gun Club. Appreciate that support for the prom. All right, with that, we have the policies that were just reviewed. Do we want to, are we all feeling comfortable about taking them as a group? In which case, are there any questions and thoughts on them? Homebound instruction, expense reimbursement policy and the disclosure of wrongful conduct policy.
All three?
Move all three? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, the approval of the safe gun storage resolution. Thoughts on that one?
So I have, we're doing it.
Yeah. Yeah, this helps.
I think we're doing it.
We do it?
Yes.
All right, anyone want to move that?
I'll move it.
Tim's moving it. Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
My apologies. My pronunciation may be wrong and I apologize. Frank, anyone can help me on pronunciation, but there's a resolution for Aladdin Tribute Garden to thank Jim Laddan's long service in the district and his support of the district. So there'll be a garden installed on high school grounds by this May. Any comments or questions? Anyone like to move this? Yes? Any second?
I'll second it, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much. And thank you to Alment Landscapes for your support as well. And now we have a second opportunity for the public to be heard. If anyone, yes, please. Yep. Frank, I don't know if you can see, but y'all be over here. Please introduce yourselves.
Sure. Yep, my name's Matt Bergeron. This is, I think, the third meeting that I've attended. But there's been a discussion of the tax exemptions. At this time, I know that the discussion was limited to volunteer exemptions. I just wanted to kind of give you some my thoughts on it. Don't speak on anyone's behalf, but just in case this might come in your consideration. I think it's important to distinguish between status-based and need-based exemptions. And then certainly that applies as well to the veterans piece as well, but tonight it was just the fire and ambulance to volunteers. When you have a status, when you have a status-based exemption, when it comes to operating tax-funded services, I think that it, personally, I think that it's a matter of that policy going to start cracking exemptions based on the status as opposed to the need. Particularly where the law provides, as was pointed out, provides some guidance as to what a volunteer is. Provides some guidance or recommendations on what that might be. You know, the reality is education is a community responsibility which should be shared equally amongst taxpayers regardless of personal status or community activity. You know, as discussed, this might have been asked by legislature as something to provide a reward. But as, when you do that, as has been discussed, you raise the prospect of acquiring winners and losers whether you can do that or not. And people who devote their time to other causes that don't get them the tax exemption that leaves them, the short end of that stick. So I think that where help, you know, help should be given where help is needed. And when it comes to tax-based services, help is needed whereas it needs based, not a status-based exemption. At a very least, I would certainly, I would certainly urge you to read on the.
to read on the adoption of an exemption to see what other rewards might be for committing in the state budget, be it to training or other, or maybe, I'm not a fan of the term unfunded mandate. Certainly this isn't a mandate, but there can be funds for it coming in order to help pay for what otherwise has, as on paper, minimal something I call it, burden might be to give this exemption, no matter how minimal it does get spread out to other taxpayers. And it does create a resonance of, once you give it to one status and then you give them the opportunity in two or three legislative years to give it to another status, are you going to feel the pressure or the obligation to give it to them? I just ask you to consider that, you know, whether or not, in determining whether or not you're going to adopt an exemption, I encourage you to wait at least a year. Those are just things that I wanted to think about personally. And I wanted to deliver it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bergeron, for your input and your thoughts. All right. And now we have an opportunity for the board to be heard. If there's no one else? No? Opportunity for the board to be heard. And then we'll move to dates to remember as of right now, that, well, aside from meeting tomorrow afternoon, and if we have a possible meeting on Sunday today. Very delightful. Right now, we have a scheduled board meeting for March 6. And so that is our next regularly scheduled board meeting. Right now, it's scheduled for the evening. With that, is there a move to adjourn? Anyone like to second that?
I would.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, for being here.
Thank you.